Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Tom? Can I have a second? Matt? All in favor? And we have seven in favor. The student rep is also away this evening. Public comments, are there any members of the public who wish to speak tonight? Okay, nobody. Approval of the regular meeting minutes for, from February 7th? Can I have a motion? Tom? Can I have a second? Matt? Any corrections? Yes, Heather?
On page two, under Becca's update, I would like to change, it's in the middle, the team led by Nancy Michu that will be creating guidelines for late work and reassessment. To update that sentence.
Any other corrections? Oh, yes, Gianna?
Page four, there's just a typo. It says "to the kids' perspective." It says "from the kids' perspective." It just needs to be "to the kids" with an apostrophe, "perspective," on page four. And then the other one, actually, I'll just drop that. That'll be good enough.
All right. Any others? All right, all in favor? And we have seven in favor. And we have non-public meeting minutes as well. Can I have a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes? Yes, Heather?
I motion to approve both sets of non-public meeting minutes from February 7th.
Okay, can I have a second? Gianna? Any corrections? Okay, all in favor? Seven in favor, and those minutes are approved as well. All right, we have the Assistant Superintendent's report.
Hi, everyone. I have the honor tonight of introducing five of our 30 student reps from our youth mental health team at the school. We've talked about this in the past, that last year we started an initiative where we went through training through NAMI, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, for a student-led suicide prevention program. These five students have joined that committee and are incredible student leaders. And in the fall of this year, I was contacted by the director and founder of the Safe Schools Initiative of New Hampshire, asking if we had any student leaders who wanted to talk about our initiative in our school at a conference in the fall. And so, one of our student leaders, Sienna Shire, she's here tonight, she'll speak, actually put in to be a speaker and interviewed and was selected to speak at that conference. And members of our group were able to go and attend that conference, not only talking to other area schools about the initiatives that we do at Oyster River, but also to learn about initiatives that are happening at other places and what we might want to bring to our school. So, I am really honored to invite all of our students up. And then I'm going to get out of their way because they don't need me. So, I will let them introduce themselves.
Hi, everyone. My name is Paige Staley, and I am a junior in high school.
I'm Sienna Shire, I'm a senior.
Hi, I'm Elise Bacon, I'm a sophomore at the high school.
Hi, I'm Eva Bart Malone, I'm a sophomore at high school.
Hi, I'm Abby Trojan, I'm a junior at the high school. And I'm going to start off our presentation.
Possibly.
Alexander, it looks like they could use a little assistance.
I can start off our presentation. So, thank you so much for having us today. And first, I want to kind of explain who we are. So, basically, like Ms. Karen wonderfully introduced, we are part of the student mental health team at Oyster River High School. And this past, this past year, we visited the Safe Schools Conference, and we're a part of that. And so, I'm going to kind of explain who we are before that and what we plan to do. So, we are the mental health team, and our number-one goal is to spread awareness about mental health and suicide prevention at Oyster River. And we hope to become a resource to other students at Oyster River if they're ever in need, and we hope to kind of teach others to be helpful friends and peers, so if others need help, they can come to them. And in this, in, sorry. So, last year, we did a training with NAMI, and we learned about certain ways that we could teach high school students about suicide prevention. And this November, we presented to freshmen about suicide awareness. Then, in this month, February, we presented to sophomores. And before that, we presented to all four grades, kind of introducing ourselves and doing a well-rounded kind of presentation about who we are and what suicide prevention is. And in the future, we hope to do juniors and seniors, and we hope that this will be something that can last in the future. Thank you. So, I'm Sienna Shire, and I was the representative from our school for the Safe Schools Conference. I was reached out to by Mark Phillips, the founder of Safe Schools, and I basically joined the Student Leadership Committee where we planned and hosted the conference. And we were lucky enough to be able to have a bunch of students from Oyster River also attend that conference. And basically, the goal of the conference was to bring schools from across New Hampshire together to share out ideas and collaborate on potentially new groups to help mental health in schools. Some schools came with groups already formed, like Dover High School has a similar initiative to us, and some high schools, like Spalding High School, for example, came with no idea, but they wanted to treat their problem. So, we basically got into groups, we were able to share out ideas, compare notes, and help each other form other groups. That's the Student Leadership Team that I was a part of. And it was a great way to make connections through schools with a bunch of like-minded peers, and I personally think that we got a lot, we got a lot of really good feedback from everyone who attended the conference, saying that they learned something new and they feel more confident going into their future, that they can create something better for their school, like we have done here at Oyster River.
So, because we came together with so many different groups from so many different schools, we learned a whole bunch and learned how to improve our own group, and gained a lot of perspectives from these other schools. So, other groups were things like Hope Squad, which we were all super blown away by, just everything that was a part of their group was just things we wanted to incorporate. There's also the Green Bandana Project, which is usually incorporated throughout college campuses, but there's parts of it that we would love to like incorporate into our group. And then there was also Dover, Falmouth, Spalding, Exeter, and private schools in Massachusetts, among many other schools that came as well. So, other things that we really wanted to take inspiration from, that we really benefited from by getting these perspectives from other schools, was like green bandanas, well, bandana. So, what they do is they, students who are a part of this program will tie a bandana to the backs of their backpacks. And people, other students who see this bandana will be like, okay, this is a safe space, this is somebody I can talk to, get resources from, which we thought was really neat. A similar idea with Dover's semicolon pins, where they would have a little semicolon pin attached to their backpacks or on their clothing, so other students could see, okay, this is a safe space. And also, maybe for us, we could incorporate having resource cards to carry around, so if anybody needs a card that has numbers, resources, et cetera, that's something we could provide. Also, some resource ideas that we gained was like maybe having a room in our school dedicated to peer counseling, or like the idea of possibly having a dedicated mental health counselor. So, just a lot of things that we learned and that we could use to improve our group.
We also heard from a group of students and staff from places all over New England, including a student currently enrolled at UNH, about a new website they're trying to create and produce, that would basically be an online mental health forum and a place to share resources of all sorts, and just be a place where students can go, and if they're struggling, they can talk to people who have similar experiences, people who know what they're talking about, and people who can help them, but also just find resources to get them through whatever they're going through. And we also heard through a recorded video message from Megan Tupai, who had the initial idea for the website, who, she talked about how the idea came from the loss that she had experienced through her college rowing team at her college. They had experienced multiple suicides over COVID, and she was really just looking for a way to help other schools and communities not have to go through what she did. And it was overall just an amazing experience to get to hear from all these people and to get to have input, like give input and help participate in the website, and yeah, it was a great experience.
So, as was mentioned, there's so many new things we want to incorporate. Here's our Word Cloud. We wanted to think about perhaps having a social media account where we can post if we're having a meeting for new people who might want to join, maybe something inspirational if we're planning on having any events. We wanted to think about having definitely identification, such as the Green Bandana Project or the pins that Dover had. We were considering increasing our meeting frequency so we can have more discussions and get to know people within our group more, since there's so many of us. Another great idea we saw was some people had clothespins, they were like wooden clothespins, and they had positive messages on them. And during like a day, you could take a positive message and you could clip it on to somebody's backpack, and then they would find a positive message. And we thought that was a really fun activity that some people did. Similar, another place had Post-it messages. So, again, the same idea, is they're pre-made positive messages, you can give it to someone, and that person can pass it on, and it's just a way to brighten up somebody's day. We also had a few ideas for community involvement, such as things like a new mural at our school. We were thinking that would be a way to like incorporate any artistic students and anybody else who might be interested in like spreading awareness through like, yeah, a beautiful mural. So, yeah, there's so many new ideas we learned at this conference, and so many things we could do to just spread awareness about our mental health team and about suicide awareness, and make it seem like a more positive environment.
Are there any questions, comments, or even ideas? We're always open to some feedback.
Gianna?
Well, first of all, thank you guys for coming. We really appreciate it, and keep up the good work. I'd just have a couple of questions, based upon what some of you said, is that you were talking about increasing the frequency of the meetings. How often do you guys meet, and how many people, how many students are involved in the organization?
So, when we originally started, when we did our initial training, we had 30 students and 15 teachers. And since then, we've recruited, I think, maybe like seven, six or seven more students to the effort. And we try to meet, I think at least twice a month. We do a debrief after we do presentations, and we reflect and see, okay, what went good during this presentation, what could we fix differently in the future? And then we always meet before we do our next presentation and say, let's practice the presentation, what we're going to say, what we're going to do, so that we make sure we deliver it in the best way possible for the students.
Got another question. I can't remember which one of you folks had said that, in particular, you were admiring something that was regarding the Hope Group?
Hope Squad?
Yeah, what was it about it that you found so inspiring?
They were, so the Hope Squad is, I think it's a national thing, right? So, there's a bunch of schools, it's like a chapter, they have it across the nation. And they're just a very put-together group. They have very foundational, they're very well-known in the school, at least for the school that came to us, it was Falmouth, right? And they were very put-together. They, they do many activities that are kind of yearly thing that the students kind of know that's coming. And they do, they just have a lot of events and things that they do to bring the student body together, and they have been, what's the word I'm looking for? They've been very successful at their school with bringing all their students together. People know who they are, they're referenced a lot, things like that. And I think we just inspired to be that well-known in our school, so that people, they know who we are. We're still fairly new, so making sure that people know who we are and know that we're a resource for our peers.
I was curious about your presentations. You said to the ninth graders that you were doing presentations, and how many of you go in to, is it advisory that you do these presentations, or how does that work?
Yeah, so we do it during advisory time, and we have groups of two or three. Usually, the third person is a like new recruit that is kind of just viewing and training with the kind of senior members of the group. And we go in and we give these pre-made presentations that are made using the NAMI slides from our training. And our goal is to take our information that we learned in our training and basically train them. So, they get the exact same training that we got, and our goal would be to have all of the students in Oyster River High School basically be trained in this mental health practice. I mean, we don't expect them, we always say this during our presentations, that we don't expect them to be counselors or therapists, but they're a resource that people can go to, and then kind of like a branch to someone who can actually help them.
I'd just like your thoughts on this. I was wondering if it's difficult to break through to boys to talk about these things? Obviously, there's huge mental health issues that have been widely publicized with girls, but I'm wondering, is it hard to break through to boys? Is there stoicism or some resistance, or, I'm just interested in your thoughts on that?
So, recently, we did a presentation to sophomores, and one thing that we learned is based on grades, when we did our initial all-grades presentation, we kind of saw, okay, these grades are like this, and they participate more and everything. And we learned really quickly that having some sort of thing to entice them is really, is a really good tactic to get people to participate. And so, we started using fruit snacks, and we bring in fruit snacks to all of our presentations. And when people participate and answer a question or say something out, we like give it to them. And I think guys especially are very food-driven, which has definitely helped, for sure, because they're always like, oh, I want the fruit snacks, I want the fruit snacks! And so, that, that definitely gets everyone involved, not just guys, but everyone gets involved that way.
You all hosted the Mental Health Awareness Panel, right? That's something your group did?
That was actually the Student Senate that...
Okay, the Student Senate did that?
Yeah, so that was actually the Student Senate, which me and Elise are part of. And we kind of worked together on that. At that time, when we did host it, last year and this year, this group wasn't fully formed quite yet, and we hadn't gone to the conference, but we worked as a senate to create that. And a lot of the members on the team went to that panel and learned a lot of information. Anne Douglas, who is part of NAMI, was on that panel, and she was the one that trained us. So, there was a lot of connections in between that, but that was a separate group that created that, but yeah. And to answer your question earlier about like the boys and things like that, I don't know if Sienna mentioned it, but we also have an adult advisor with us, and I know that in the group that I presented to, there was a lot of boys who were distracted, and you know, I was in the gym, so there was like footballs and basketballs, and they wanted to go do that instead of listen to the presentation. So, having that adult with there is, with us, is really nice, and in terms of like people don't go on their phones, or they just really listen to the presentation. But I agree with Sienna that the fruit snacks are definitely a good incentive.
And then you all are likely aware that if the budget passes, we've dedicated funds to hire a dedicated mental health counselor. How do you see that person interacting with the group? Do you find that'll be a great resource? Just kind of spitballing some ideas?
I mean, I would hope that that person could participate in our group in a way, and come to the meetings, and kind of know what's going on with the students. And us as the students in that mental health team who interact with our peers every day can be kind of like a bridge for that person as well, and we can kind of provide feedback and help them kind of understand the students more. And I think just having that person in the school would be really great, because then the students, we, as us being like the bridges in a way, where we interact with the students, they come to us, and then we could send them to that person and be like, hey, we know someone who can help you, let's get you there. I think that would be really awesome, too, because then we have a dedicated person that we can send these people to.
I also think that's kind of a big part of the group. I think it's part of the point that we, as students, can be kind of like a peer intermediary almost between students and counselors who aren't, who are having trouble asking for help, or maybe aren't quite comfortable taking that step. We can go to the counselors, and we can let their trusted adults or faculty know that they're struggling, and they should at very least be checked up on, and stuff like that.
It's a scary topic to think about, and the more you talk about it, the more mystery is taken out of it, so I think this is great. I wonder if your initial training was where you were trained as counselors? Was that at a high school?
That was right at Oyster River. So, we had Anne Douglas, she came in and she trained us. It was about a full, it was a full-day activity, and we spent the whole day basically learning all these things that we are now teaching to the rest of the school. And we are trained as trainers, so this is a sustainable group. And anyone who joins, we can now train them to become a trainer, so they will keep training new people, and hopefully, this will last for a very long time.
Yeah, I wonder if it would be good to get other schools into Oyster River, and you can train them and kind of, hopefully, it'll spread as fast as COVID did, and it'd be a good thing.
Yeah, I mean Dover also got the same NAMI training, and so they also have the same program. One thing that we really reflected on is that Dover High School had their initiative started about three years ago, and theirs is kind of like fading out in a way. So, people aren't really joining anymore, it's not as big of a thing, because when they first started, it was during COVID, and they had lost three boys during COVID. And that's what really started the group. And now that that loss is kind of fading away, it's not as, the problem doesn't seem as prominent anymore, and people aren't joining the group. So, we're really hoping that we can keep the message alive and make sure people know that this is a thing and it's out there, and we want to help anyone who might be struggling, and hopefully, keep this group going and keep expanding this group, too.
Well, thank you very much, really appreciate your coming tonight. Thank you, and thank you for all you're doing in the school. Yes? Anything else? Okay. All right, so we are down to, we do not have a student rep report tonight, as I mentioned. She is playing her last regular season basketball game. So, we have a nomination for Human Resources Director.
I have technical difficulties. So, as Suzanne was saying, we did have a hiring committee of five people that, let's see, one, yeah, five people that interviewed five candidates. After deliberations using our rubric, we came up with hiring, wanting to hire Jennifer Horton. She currently was under contract with UNH, covering an HR coordinator assignment, and before that, she worked since 2011 at Northeast Rehab Hospital as a HR generalist and became an HR director.
Any questions? All right, can we have a nominee, can we have a motion to approve Jennifer Horton as the Human Resources Director? Matt?
So moved.
Second? Yes, Gianna? All in favor? And that's seven in favor. All right. Congratulations to Jennifer. UNH survey results.
So, I'd like to invite Sean McKinley to come, come up. We, as you know, we had a committee of people working together on the competency-based grading survey that was planned for pre-pandemic and then was paused. And so, we had a committee looking at the past survey, making some edits to it. And Jim and I met with Sean in the UNH Survey Center to reconfigure the survey, and Sean is here to give us, talk about the results.
Hi, everybody. I'm Sean McKinley, as you mentioned. Thank you, Suzanne, for the introduction, and thank you for having me. I'm a project director at the Survey Center. And yeah, Suzanne mentioned, we initially planned this for, just before, actually, COVID started, so fortunately, that got pushed back quite a bit, but we did end up getting to it with some revisions. So, what I have for you tonight is just a brief overview. It's not the full report, I have delivered that to Superintendent Morse, so if you want full details about the report, you can get it there. This is just a little bit more easily comprehensible in a shorter form of the report based on our results. Actually, I should start with, we ended up having, we ended up having about 867 people do the survey. 520 of them were students, and then we had about 280 parents, and we had around 75 staff members. And there are a couple people who were both staff members and parents. So, we got a pretty good response rate. We sent it to everybody who is a student from sixth to 10th grade. The ninth and 10th graders were asked to recall their previous experiences. We didn't break down in this report here, in the abbreviated report, we do in the larger one, the differences between grades, but there are pretty significant ones, particularly in terms of the ninth and 10th graders saying that they don't recall, which is certainly understandable, so that's something to bear in mind, but there are those differences there. We also sent the survey to parents of everybody who has a current middle schooler or a past middle schooler, somebody who's in high school at the moment, and did something similar there, where we asked them to recall their students' experiences when they were in middle school. And lastly, of course, we sent it to staff members who are teaching those grades. So, get into the report just a little bit. The first thing that we were mentioning was the middle school to the high school transition. We asked this about the students and the parents, how easy or difficult it was for them to transition, and you can see that for the most part, the students consider this to have been relatively easy. About 71% of them said it was very or somewhat easy, but a lot of those people were saying somewhat. But then when we asked the parents, there's a pretty clear difference there. Parents are pretty closely divided whether they think it was easy or difficult for their students when they transitioned. This, again, is a smaller subset of people, of course, because this is only people who have students who used to be in middle school and are now in high school, and have gone through that transition. We also asked them that question to ensure that they, they hadn't attended a different middle school, so they hadn't had this specific transition. So, this is a subset of people, to be sure. But this gets to a somewhat consistent theme that we see, that there are pretty clear differences between students and staff members on the one hand, and parents on the other. You'll see some more of that throughout this report, even, and also in the full report, if you'd like to read that. When we asked students whether they have any comments in general about their transition to high school, we're seeing that some of them say it was difficult. A couple say that the middle school didn't prepare them well for high school, or the transition wasn't too difficult. But a fair number of them just said that they didn't have any comments. 16% just said something unrelated to grading at all. So, not too many clear responses that we got from the students. For the parents, on the other hand, we saw about a third of them said that the middle school didn't prepare their student well for high school, and 17% of them said that they didn't prefer, that they preferred traditional grading. But a couple others were saying it wasn't very difficult for, for their students. So, again, a little bit of differences between students and parents and their perception of how that transition went. We asked about the understanding of competency-based ratings. And here you can see at the top in figure five, that among the students, the vast majority of them say that they understand what it means when they get each of these grades. And below that, you can see that a fair number of them, for the most part, understand their teacher's comments on how to improve their ratings and advancing up from each level. And then below, you can see that staff members say that they themselves understand the system quite well. In addition, very, very few of them say that they don't understand it well, or don't understand it well at all. But then below that, interestingly, you see that we also asked the staff members whether, how well they think their students understand these ratings, and you can see there that almost a third of them said, think that their students don't really understand it very well, which is interesting, just in contrast to what the students are saying themselves. So, this is one instance in which there's a difference between the staff members and the students. There's a few others as well, but... but those distinctions are something that we see in a few places. And then we asked about the student progress, both the reports that people can view and their power school. And we're seeing that a fair number of people check their students' progress pretty regularly, about 40% of them do once or twice a month or more often. And then we asked as well about how well it helps them understand what to expect on their quarterly progress report. And there you can see that a reasonable majority think that they do very or somewhat well. But again, a large proportion of that is people saying somewhat well. So there's certainly some room for improvement there. And then we asked about those people, it's a relatively small percentage, those groups where they said that they view the power, the power school progress reports less often than once a month or never. And we asked them why that that's the case for them. And you can see that a fair amount of them said that they thought it was difficult to access or use. Some people say that they're satisfied with other reports, presumably, I think in that case, is the quarterly progress report or other things like that. Some people say it wasn't informative. Others say that their child does well enough that they're not worried about it. And some other people say that they just talk with their child directly. So there's differing reasons here that people might not be reading that, not just because they can't or don't think it's helpful. Sometimes they just don't feel the need. And then moving on to the progress reports, you can see that for the most part, parents do understand or they feel that the, this helps them, this helps them understand their students' progress pretty well. But again, a fair amount of people there say somewhat well, but and about a little more than a quarter say that it's not very well or not well at all. Moving on to, sticking with those progress reports, when we asked people if it gives a clear idea of their students' strengths and areas in need of improvement, this is one of the ones where we saw a fair amount of disagreement. You can see four in 10 of our parents disagreed with this statement. And for both of them, again, you're seeing the somewhat agree and somewhat disagree, pretty, pretty large proportions of both bars. So there's not a ton of people on the extremes with this, but there's a fair amount of ambiguity in how people are saying whether this gives them a clear idea of their student. We asked that same question of the staff below and asking how well these things and their perception prepare the parents and help them understand these things. And staff are far more positive about them. You can see that six in 10 think that they do a good job in this regard. And only 20% or about 20% don't think that they do a very good job. And then finally, we asked parents what changes could be made to the reporting system and make it more understandable to them. And you can see that about 40% of people said that they'd like to change to traditional grading. That was a pretty common thing that people volunteered in several places. We saw it most clearly here. And a couple other similar comments were in there. Some people, about 10%, wanted a transition in grading or a combination in middle school. Some other people wanted clearer definitions or more teacher comments as well. A couple other people mentioned things like improved technology and more information, but about 40% of people, plurality, a clear plurality, would like just to change to traditional grading. The students themselves, they mentioned this several times in the comments and then it's pretty clear in this chart as well. There's a very pronounced thought among the students and also the parents that it's very different, the grading system from teacher to teacher, in particular, earning an M or an E. And people in the comments specifically mentioned the E quite frequently, that that is very difficult to understand exactly what that entails. Some say that some teachers don't give them out at all. And later on, we can see that that seems to have a little bit of an effect, people say, on student motivation. So this is one of the areas that we saw that was the kind of most negative responses, especially among the students who by and large are pretty positive. Here, this is definitely an aspect of the grading system that they thought could use some improvement. And then we asked about their behavior in terms of when they get these grades, whether they try to improve them. And you can see that when, when they get that B or a P, then most of them, three quarters of the students say that they try to improve it. But if they get an M instead of, or if they get an M, only about 50% of them try to get to an E. So that's something that is pretty clear, like I said, in the comments and also in a couple of these questions that that's an issue. When we asked the parents that same question, there's a little bit, again, of a discrepancy. The parents think that their students are trying for these things at slightly lower levels than the students report they do themselves. But the phenomenon is pretty consistent there. As you can see that trying to advance from a B to a P to an M or an E is definitely higher than going from an M to an E. So more of the perceptions kind of in their practices here. This was another area where you can, you can see a fair amount of disagreement or a fair amount of negativity. As I mentioned, that the student engagement motivation, many parents especially said that they don't think that the system is very effective at increasing engagement and motivation in students. And staff also somewhat agree with this about, they're about split whether they think they, this is effective or ineffective at doing this. And again, for staff, that's also pretty noticeable because staff, in addition to students, are largely positive about the system. So this is another area that is relatively negative in how people feel. And then for the students, we were asking them about their specific behaviors in terms of what they do after they get one of these grades. And in terms of asking for extra help, about a third of them say that they always or most of the time ask for help when they get a B or a P, but a similar amount say that they don't usually or they never do. And then when we asked people, those students, whether they, the opportunity to redo work, which is part of the system motivates them to learn and produce better work, you know, we're seeing still about four in 10 people say that that's true for them all the time or most of the time, but around a quarter say it's not usually the case or never. So some disparity there between the students. For professional development, we asked this just of the staff members, whether they're satisfied with the level of professional development and the type regarding competency-based reporting. And you can see that a fair amount of the staff, a little more than two thirds are satisfied with that, but also a third are not satisfied. And again, there's a fair amount of people who say somewhat. So there's some room for improvement, even within that positive bar there. And then we asked them what specifically might be, they would like to be offered for competency-based professional development. And you can see that some people said grading, more time, system-wide development. A fair number just said other things that were very difficult to categorize and we didn't get too many responses here in general. So we don't quite know what to do with the rest of those, but those are the things that people mention most often is those specifics of the grades themselves and just more time to figure these things out. And then for their overall assessments, we asked the staff, how well does the reporting system encourage our students to learn? And again, largely positive here. A majority say that it does that very or somewhat well, but almost half say that it's only somewhat well. So again, room for improvement there. And then among the parents, we're asking that same question. And there, again, there's a little bit more negativity. Half of people say that it doesn't, it does this not very well or not at all well. And 42% say it doesn't vary or somewhat well. And then when we're looking at the effectiveness of several different things, including making the learning goals clear, allowing students to receive opportunities to redo, relearn, reassess, things like that, meaningful feedback, those sorts of things. You can see, again, the difference was, the differences between staff and parents. In particular, there's pretty big differences on making learning goals clear and providing students with meaningful feedback. You can see that the, again, the staff are a good deal more positive than the parents are about these things. And then when we asked the students what their overall thoughts were, if they had any, any final comments about the reporting system, about a third of them said that they dislike the competency-based grading system or they prefer a traditional one. A fair number of them just, again, didn't offer any comments or didn't have anything really on topic. But other, other than said that the, the grades were too inconsistent or imprecise. And again, as I said, this is something of a theme, particularly with the M category or the M rating. A fair number of people in comments mentioned this specifically, not just that it's difficult to understand how to improve that to be an E, but also where exactly one falls in that M. A few mentioned that they thought students who were, you know, on the cusp of getting an E and a student who barely reached an M would be very, very far apart, but would be receiving the same grade. And therefore, they didn't really understand either the students or the parents really where they are in terms of mastering the concept. Then the parents, again, a large number of them, when just given the opportunity to mention some final comments, a lot of them just said that they'd like to change to traditional grading. And then among the staff members, very, very few of them said this. It's only about, I think, 4% of people said that they'd like to change the traditional grading among the staff members. But what they would like instead is reforming the competency-based grades. A lot of those comments were things related to, like I said, getting a better understanding of what exactly these ratings mean. A couple suggested adding in different grades. I believe some parents earlier had mentioned having, you know, like an M plus or minus and things like that. But that's something that the teachers mentioned quite a bit, the staff members, I should say, is that they'd like some kind of reform to the grades. And some others mentioned better technology or clearer definition is a similar comment there where they'd like to understand better what those are. And a couple also mentioned, like the parents had earlier when we talked about the transition, that they'd like a transition or a combination of grading systems in middle school to help better prepare the students for high school. So that's the end of the short presentation. Like I said, there's a full report that's available that has a lot more detail, that has breakdowns among the students by grade and several other, you know, larger bits of detail and tables, if you'd like to go through them. But if you have any questions or comments right now, I'd be happy to hear them and answer if I can.
I think one of the things I definitely would be curious about is how that did break down by grade because, you know, I know one of the things is that as students get closer to high school, my guess is that probably more parents were probably nervous. I'm not sure off the top of your head if you know that to be true or not.
Yeah, I believe that the, the way we approached it is asking parents whether they have a student in high school, middle school, and even elementary school. And it's a select all that applies. So there's some parents who say, I have a high school student that might also have a middle school student. But generally speaking, yes, there was a similar phenomenon with parents as there was with students themselves, that the parents who have a high schooler tended to be a little bit more negative and also, again, unsurprisingly, were more likely to say that they don't know or don't remember. So that's something that also is a bit of a discrepancy here and a bit of a difference. But it varies question to question how big that gap is. And in some cases, that phenomenon doesn't hold true, but generally it does.
Thank you, Sean. I remember four years ago when we were meeting on this and glad, glad that it could be done. I'd just like to make two points. They're not necessarily questions for you, but maybe issues for the board. One of them is that when the competency grading was first proposed, there was no, nothing beyond meets. And I think the board and I think to some degree, the community felt that there needs to be something higher than that, that, you know, that that's a space, but there should be something, you know, indicate excellence. So they created a category called exemplary, which would not have been the term I would have used. But it seems to me that that has not been integrated into the grading system. There's variability and I think maybe even some resistance to using that. So that's, that's a key issue I think has to be worked out. And the other thing, just what I mentioned is, and I'm not going to be on the board for this, but I think that there needs to be some response to this survey. And what that response is because it, I think there are issues here that go beyond the communication, that we're not just communicating to parents. There's, there's, there's something unsatisfactory for a lot of people about what's happening with competency reporting and how, how we deal with that and how we're going to, you know, what group comes together. But I think that's going to be, you know, maybe when you just set goals for next year. Because I think we can't just walk away from this. You know, I think, I think there's something here in terms of imprecision, in terms of motivation, in terms of inconsistency, and how are we going to improve on that? So I think that's something for the board.
I largely agree with Tom that I think this is definitely something that we need to consider to have a response to the public and also a plan to improve the situation because you can see a lot of it where some things, it's, it did a good job, I think, of actually saying some things that people thought were doing well, but definitely showing some rooms for improvement. I kind of get the gist that people feel like the M is a big bucket and that perhaps we need to work on defining that bucket and refining it in a way that's more meaningful to apparently mostly students and parents, but evidently some of the teachers as well. So I think this is a good start. And of course, I'm very interested in seeing the breakdown as Deice was mentioning, because I think that would be very informative about how particular people are feeling and whether or not that's affected by where their student is within the middle school and elsewhere. So I'm really glad that we, we got this survey going. So thank you.
I, I think what Tom said is largely reflects a lot of my thoughts. I think the survey is an important point in our learning about, this is, this is sort of a fluid process. We've, we've always seen it that way, that, that this big a change is going to evolve and hopefully continue to improve over time. I think we know enough now, though, that I think what Tom describes as a response is going to be critically important. And I think it's certain components that I would encourage the board to think about, including in that, if you decide to do it, are acknowledgement of what we've heard and then specific examples of how we intend to address what we've learned, in particular, the negatives. You know, some of this, I think, anecdotally, in my mind, could be attributed to, you know, generationally, those of us who never experienced competency grading are, meaning the parents in particular, or those who have, as professionals, not really been engrossed in, in learning it and using it, are, are the most likely group to have a lot of questions and concerns. And it's not to delegitimize in any way those questions and concerns, but I think it makes sense in many ways that because parents aren't as directly involved on the day-to-day, hour-to-hour basis, that they're going to have the, you know, higher level of discontent. With that said, though, we need to get that number down. And I think in, in diving into this and whether it's, you know, getting a committee back together to really dive into the results of this and study it and come up with a, an action plan, you know, I think, I think it will be meaningful to the, to the parents in particular that we, we choose to take some sort of path along those lines. It will signal to them that we are really committed to continuing to evolve and improve this because they're just as important as everyone else involved in this system functioning well. And I think what we're hearing is it doesn't function particularly well for them. So that, I just, I think Tom's thoughts are generally along the lines of what I was thinking when I read through the results.
Matt?
I agree with what all three of you have said. Just out of curiosity, the comments in relation to the eight to nine transition, I know it was a survey about grading, but was there much mention about the amount of work, specifically homework?
There are a few offhanded ones from the students. As I mentioned, a not insignificant number of them mentioned things that weren't related to grading. We were trying to steer them in that direction. But yeah, I recall a handful of them mentioned higher workload and things like that. But I seem to also recall a few saying that it was difficult for only a short period of time and then was reasonable.
And then my second question is, the staff members that responded, were they limited to that eight, six to 10 range?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I think there were a few that said that they said that they teach other grades. But again, it was a select all that apply option. I don't believe any exclusively said that they teach other grades outside of that range.
Just to piggyback off of that, the staff members were primarily middle school staff members because they were the ones that are implementing CBG. But there are some staff members that teach high school as well as middle school. So there is, there was some overlap with that.
Go ahead, Tom.
Since I'm going to be leaving, so I have to, I just think that in this community, that anything that impedes motivation or striving is really frowned upon and it's undercuts, I think, why, why people come to this community to be in these schools. And the thing that concerned me and concerned me right from the beginning with, you know, M being the standard that you go for, was that would, would set a lower bar. And so that striving and excellence is maybe an option, but not something you really are impelled to do. And there's even these posters in, in, in schools where it's the journey of, the journey of competence, you know, it's kind of like a roadmap. And it ends at meets. It ends at meets. That's, that's where you're going, you know? So I think that we're saying. So I think that we're, I think I'm concerned that they're sending messages that excellence, striving, going beyond is something you might try or you might not. And I'm, you know, if that message comes through to kids and parents, I think that is just an anathema in this community. I mean, so that's my little speech. But I think that's my fear about having this meets category being perceived as really what you're aiming for.
Oh, that's fine. Very good comments. Absolutely, I completely agree with what's been said. Again, to reiterate, I really would look forward to getting a breakdown, particularly the middle school, because I feel like even if it was as a five-six group and a seven-eight group, to see if those, you know, to tease out, was there a big difference between those two groups in terms of their perception? I mean, just, you know, my thinking is that five-six would have less of an issue with competency-based grading than seven-eight. That's what I'm thinking. But I hope, I'd like to see it teased out so we could see if that's true because if that is the case, then that would help us to figure out, you know, maybe a direction that we need to go in. Maybe there needs to be more of a transition year in eighth grade or, you know, whatever. But I think that that would be really helpful. But very much appreciate, this was a great presentation. It really got to the heart of what we wanted to find out. So really appreciate the work that you did on this.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me. Anyone have any other questions before I go? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We are on list of policies for first read. Dan?
Thanks. Okay. So beginning with, I'll just go over, please ask any questions as I go along. I'd like to just move these as a block once we're done discussing. GBEB, Staff Conduct with Students. This is a policy that we've been working on for a number of months. I would say in general terms, it worked very well in extreme examples where, God forbid, a member of our staff were to have done something that would be a federally or state reportable offense. Where we saw opportunity for more clarity was where behavior rose above something that was appropriate for remediation. And that was one of the things we tried to keep in mind all along, is that people are going to make mistakes. We always want to, you know, help people learn, help people move on from mistakes they're making when they're relatively minor nature. And I think the policy continues to achieve that. We really wanted to focus on that middle ground where someone may be in violation of a policy, but their actions may not have risen to a reportable or extreme level. And to give, to use the policy to give the administration more a clearer direction on how to both respond and react in those circumstances. Also acknowledging that, you know, one of the things we learned several years ago is in continuing to allow community groups to utilize our facilities, we are at some liability in how those organizations, even though we have no say in how they run their business, generally speaking, by virtue of them running programs with students on our property, we have a certain exposure in that. And we wanted to address that as best we can. So we'd been working on it for a number of months. We met with our legal counsel at our last meeting. And I think it currently reflects our best effort at responding most effectively in those sort of gray area sort of circumstances where we've decided that we need to move on from a person, but what they've done has not risen to a level of a reportable offense. So rather than go through the whole thing, I'll just highlight some of the changes. One of the things that we've tried to modernize and make the policy have a longer shelf life, so to speak, is to, rather than try to identify platforms upon which staff are not to interact with students on or are approved, we just decided to define approved means of communication. So you send a prohibited contact, number eight. We basically just say, the district is now in a better place. Many of you remember a number of years ago, we had a lot of different communication platforms. And staff with all good intentions had adopted those platforms because we, as a district, weren't really centralizing and offering, you know, official platforms for them to communicate with their students on. We have now addressed that. So we have approved platforms for communication, email obviously, parent square currently. And so what the policy does is says, your communications with students are restricted to those approved platforms. And if you deviate from those approved platforms, that is a violation of the policy, rather than try to keep up with a constant treadmill of different platforms that are coming and Any, and we're also in keeping with our focus on mental health and wellness. When we identify a violation of this policy that impacts a particular student, you'll see on page two, under reporting violations, response, the district shall offer mental health and wellness supports to students who are victims of contact deemed to violate this policy. I think that's an important one. It continues to offer the administration flexibility in what the appropriate services are, whether they're in-house or out-of-house. But it establishes that that offer is going to be made. And I think those are the highlights that I wanted to bring up. Are there any questions, things I can clarify or answer for folks?
I think these are, the policies this time are very, you know, sensitive in, you know, in terms of controversial topics. I think you guys did a great job on that. And it's, you know, not just ordinary procedures, this is really, really major stuff. The one question I had, Dan, is on like number five in the, let's see, what page was that at? The page where, so staff contact with students, you have prohibited contact, and then you have like a list below that where it says, socializing or spending time with students, including not limited to activities such as going out for meals or movies, shopping, traveling, recreational activities. I'm wondering if you might say spending extended time, because socializing is a little bit of a vague term, it seems to me. And because you socialize, if you meet somebody in the, you know, Hannaford, and you talk about what, you know, how are things going? And I think that's perfectly okay.
So this is one of the conversations we had with legal counsel, acknowledging, of course, that staff wear many hats. They're often members of our community, their parents, their friends. The way, so what this is trying to focus on is interactions where the staff person is interacting in their staff capacity with a student. And in that section you're referring to, they need to get prior authorization or will review their activity with their principal supervisor as appropriate. So I think it still leaves that space for normal community interactions. We have many parents who happen to be teachers or administrators or guidance counselors, what have you. They still have the flexibility and the freedom to, in the capacity of a community member or a parent or a friend, interact with students that their families choose to interact with each other. This is really honing in on their role as a district employee. I don't know if that clarifies it enough, but...
So like an advisory teacher couldn't take their advisory out to a meal or to go see a movie as a group or with a small group without the school knowing ahead of time? But if they're at the movies and see the students, that's not something that's part of this policy?
Right. And again, as with any policy, you know, as we learn more about situations that it might not address or not address clearly enough, the board, of course, has the ability to refer it back to the policy committee for a review and revision.
Before we move on, Dan, it's so funny because I've looked at this policy like how many times, right? And now that I'm sitting here under number five in the same section, so the same talking about before engaging in the following activities, you know, we'll review the activity, that whole section. Number five, it's just formatting, which I think just is confusing because in the parentheses it starts, it says, this prohibition does not extend to community activities, and then there's a break in the line.
Yep.
And that should continue. So if, Karen, if you, you know, can just make a note that that should all flow as one continuous paragraph. There shouldn't be a break there and there shouldn't be a capital for such because then I think that would be a little clearer.
Okay, so we'll change that. Any others? Okay, the others are a little more straightforward, sorry. I'm sorry, Gianna.
Are we moving on to like the IMC policy?
No, no, no. If you had a question about the first one.
No, so that's...
Okay, go ahead.
I'm done.
Oh, I'm good to go. Okay. I thought you wanted me to address something. Okay. The primary change here is we are striking significant content from the policy and moving it to the R document, which is the administrative procedures. Something that Heather pointed out is in an R document, and I'm open to suggestions, but I happen to agree, in the first paragraph to promote appropriate and fair consideration, in the instructional setting, it says, the board, I agree with Heather, they should say the district. This is an administrative tool and not a board tool. So I would, I would move with that, that minor change. And then, yeah, so we're primarily moving content to the R document. And then there's some other language and formatting changes. Gianna did that?
Yeah, I actually think we might need to work on a little bit of the wording on the paragraph five, says outside speakers of controversial issues. It's the wording of to expose students to speakers of more than one side of the issue. In previous paragraphs, they're using more along lines of using points of view and things like that. And I think that might be a safer word to use because essentially this has the danger of encoding both siderism. And I think that could be a danger in certain topics where, you know, the two sides or more sides are actually not equivalent. And I don't want to be codifying that into policy. So I think there might need to be a rework of that to remove the idea of sides.
In that same paragraph, do you see where we struck differing and alternative?
Right. And that's, I prefer like the points of view, but it's, the sides is still there in the previous...
You're totally right.
Get it out of there.
With alternative, that's what we were trying to do. I had thought we were going to strike that differing sides.
Okay.
I just don't remember if that's one that we missed or if it just...
I think we may have. Tell you what.
It's an excellent point.
I think that's an important enough edit that I believe you're right, Matt, but I don't have it in front of me. So we should send this back to policy to clarify that, I think. So we'll withhold first read on this one. Thank you. Any others? Okay, and the last one, GCM, again, fairly minor edits, largest change at the end, striking out three. Essentially, there's no reason to single out special education teachers because they are teachers. Therefore, the policy already, without three, it already addresses them. And that's it. Any other questions? So I will move for first read, GBEB, Staff Conduct with Students, with the minor changes we discussed, and GCM, Professional Staff Workload, for first read.
Can I have a second, Gianna? All right.
I have a second.
Any other further discussion on those? All right, all in favor? And we have seven in favor. And then, Dan, do you also want to move for deletion, policy GCG?
Right. GCG. Of course, I didn't pull that. Hold on.
I can, if you'd like me to go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so for deletion, GCG, and I don't have my notes on this. So this essentially, if my memory serves, is an antiquated policy already addressed. Therefore, we are deleting it because it exists elsewhere.
I believe it was also just that there aren't any, yeah.
Right. The positions specifically addressed in this policy no longer exist within the district, right? Excellent.
Do they no longer have the potential of existing in the district as well?
I believe it's, I think it's going to be, it's something that would be addressed within the contract.
Contract, yeah.
Yeah, within, yes, yeah. That was the reasoning.
So my understanding is they do not currently exist in the currently negotiated contracts.
Right.
So they could, so to your point perhaps, they could be reinstated at a later date and then we would have to address them in existing policy. But they haven't existed for some time.
We no longer have job sharing, so if it does return, then we could go back and look at, look at the policy.
I'm sorry, did you, I'm sorry, did you make a motion?
I'll move that for deletion. GCG, job sharing, part-time, substitute professional staff employment.
And is there a second? Matt? All in favor? Seven in favor. All right. So we are now on our school board self-evaluation. I kind of, I liked the way that Michael kind of conducted it last year where folks just kind of went around and shared, you know, how they thought what we did with our goals in terms of, you know, things we did well or areas for future improvement. If everyone is okay with that, I'd just like to go around and do that. Is that all right with everyone? It just seemed to be a lot, it seemed to be a more organized way than just kind of people jumping in. So, and certainly we can, after everyone's had a chance to share, you know, people can add additional comments as they'd like. But in that, Tom, would you like to go first?
Sure. So I'll be quite brief. First, I'd like to say I think the meetings were well-run and I think Denise, you did a great job running the meetings. And just, I could add that working with you for, what, 10 years probably, a long time, just how much I appreciate your leadership and your commitment to the board. I thought we had limited objectives, which is good, and I think we pretty much accomplished them. I was really glad we got to the survey. It took a long time to get there, but I think that's an important thing. So obviously, we created a very compacted fall and probably in retrospect, to have three people be the finance committee and the screening committee, it might not have been, and it might have been better to spread the wealth a little bit of that. But I think in that work, I'd just like to again say Heather was fantastic. Brian was a great leader of the finance committee. And I think both the budget and the results of the superintendent search came out well. And I think that, but I think it was a lot of work in the fall, very compressed, which I think disrupted some of our board meetings. Just one final thing I want to say, it's one issue that didn't come up, that I wish it had come up, and I hope that it does come up, is the role of sophomores in the elective system. Because I think that those of us that, I remember during the pandemic, we were told that sophomores were going to be excluded purely for health reasons, because you wanted to segregate the freshmen and sophomores and juniors and seniors. The option of sophomores taking electives goes back a long ways. I was checking with all my kids, you know, when they were in school, and they all took electives as sophomores. This is, and my understanding of how the elective system works is the more people you have in it, the more you can offer. And so, and I'm not saying that we should go, you know, maybe we shouldn't go back, but that should be something that takes more deliberation than we've given it. And I remember Paige brought it up, you know, you know, last spring, you know, we never got to that. And I think that we need to, that needs to be looked at. So I hope that that gets on the... So I hope that that gets on the agenda and, because it's, the elective system is the jewel of the high school. It's the core, it's the beating heart of the high school, I think. And, and we really need to protect that and nourish that. So that's something I hope we, you know, I hope comes up. So that's what I have to say.
Do you want to go that way? I want to go last.
All right, gonna mess me up. I was gonna go last, but that's all right. I will allow that. That's fine. Dan, would you like to go next?
Okay, sure. So again, Tom mentioned something that I think, I hope the future board will take up because what he recalls is what I recall, which was that the change to the elective system was made as a, as a response to the limitations and the struggles of the COVID pandemic, that it was never intended to be a long-term solution. And that frankly, one of the things that differentiates our district from others is that elective system and the student choice, and their freedom to sort of begin to learn along those, the college-type model. You know, I think, I think this year was a bit of an anomaly, obviously, given how much time had to be invested. And so grateful to the search committee for all the work they did. But it was a, it was not a typical year in the sense that we were able to, you know, maintain a typical workload. It was a tremendously time-consuming process, as it should be. So I think we handled that relatively well. I think, you know, I guess my comfort level with, especially during budget season, it all worked out great, but having truncated meetings to accommodate some of the stuff we were trying to add in with the search process, some of that was a reality. But it was, you know, I think, I think the board will do well to get back to a more typical meeting schedule and workload next year. You know, with, with some of the turnover on the board, you know, when I first trained the board, a lot of folks had been on the board for a long time, and it stayed relatively that way for a while. We've had a decent amount of turnover, we're gonna have some more. We're going to have a new superintendent. I think it's perhaps a suggestion I would offer to the next board is, is it's an opportunity for the board to look at ways to get a little bit more directly engaged, whether it be simple things like, you know, recording sort of our own record of meetings, whether it be our primary meeting or our committee meetings, getting more involved in that directly as opposed to relying on administration to do that for us. I think it's, the benefits are twofold. It takes some of the weight off the administration. It also gets us more involved in directly managing the conversations, the recordings, and keeping track of that follow-up. But I think we've done a good job over the last number of years of keeping track of things, relatively speaking, keeping on track with our strategic plan. So those are my thoughts, thanks.
How about we go down? Gianna, would you like to go next?
Some of my thoughts are similar to Tom's and Dan's. This is my first year on the board, so I had some learning curve issues on who I should be communicating to with whens. That's a personal thing that I think I definitely got better on. But regarding the overall process, one of the things I definitely think we could work on more again was, was the thing that Tom mentioned, is that we had a little bit of uneven distribution of labor amongst the board that made some people pretty heavily loaded, and then other peoples had a very light load. And I'd like to avoid that. One of the ways I think we could address that is to make sure that the tasks for being on like a superintendent versus a school board committee are more evenly distributed, to make sure that people have equal weigh-in on particular issues. That's one thing I think would be good. And then relating back to what Dan was saying, one of the things I think that'd be very good is, is again, to try and reduce some of the burden on admin, is to make it so the school board is taking on more of our own secretarial duties. And one of the things I actually think that'd be very helpful in that is actually regarding the formulation of the school board goals. The school board goals should absolutely be a cooperative thing between the superintendent and the school board, or to formulate those goals. But what happened this time was, was that Dr. Morris essentially was, ended up being the secretary for that, which made it hard for us to work and develop those goals together. I actually think that one of us should be writing that down to make it so that we have more ownership and understanding of those goals. Because we actually only got a final copy of those two weeks ago, and they're not posted on the website for the public to see. So I think if we have more ownership of that, I think it'll be helpful in developing the process in a very transparent and publicly available manner, and to make it more understandable for everybody. So I agree with trying to decrease some of that burden on having somebody else have to take all those notes. And the rest of it, I think it was well-done. I just, I will continue to learn and work on doing some of these things. So that's it.
Heather?
So, I'll try to get through this without coughing to death. Some of the positives I saw this year, we did a lot of work together. We built the budget, we built candidate profiles, we looked through comments and comments and comments related to focus group data, and we looked through all the comments related to the candidate visits. We developed interview questions, we came up with a method for doing references. There was a lot of work we did as a group, just us. And we did a really good job of it. We worked very collaboratively. People stepped up when they were needed. And it wasn't like trying to herd cats. We were all moving in the same direction. And it was, you know, for a body that really only gets together in public two times a month, it's kind of an astonishing thing. And so that level of trust we had with each other, that level of ownership in the process, it was really, really special. And so I was really, really glad to be doing a lot of that work with you all. So one of the other things, I had two other on the good things side, we're in general a pretty thoughtful group. There aren't a lot of you-jerk reactions. People want to stop and think about things, and that's really nice to have as a deliberative body. And the other is that it's a pretty caring bunch of humans, right? Nobody's sort of pushing stuff off, and that's also a really nice thing to have with colleagues. A couple of the things I was thinking about as we move forward is, the first is I'd like to move goal-setting much, much earlier. Make it the early summer, so we have some time in the summer to start getting ducks in a row before we start the fall and things start running really fast. So maybe try and get those done by mid-July instead. How we continue to build trust, as Dan said, we've had a lot of turnover, and we're getting more turnover. And so how we continue to build this trust between these seven individuals and administration, thinking about what that looks like, how we mentor the new school board members. So Gianna has commented about sort of the learning curve, and we'll have new folks coming on who will have that same learning curve. Maybe thinking about, maybe not so formal, but just thinking about how we try to get people up to speed so we can be effective. Similarly, Gianna mentioned how we reinforce our chain of command, particularly with a new superintendent coming in. When should we be routing things to our chair? When should we be routing things to the superintendent? What is the appropriate process for that? And, and so part of that is also a global concern I have, that is, Robert starts to get spun up, that board members who are used to really quick answers from Jim won't get them as quickly from Robert because there's gonna take time for him to know these things as well. And so I want to be careful that we don't start doing end-around to Robert, to say going to Suzanne, or going to the building, you know, going around what we've currently established is the go-to-Gym model. We need to think about what that's gonna look like. And then the other two bits I have are communication bits. So one of the only things I could criticize about the superintendent search process was not knowing people's consistency on checking emails. And so if I send an email and I need a response in a day, is there an expectation that somebody will have checked it in that timeframe or not? And so in sort of general board stuff, I think it's probably not super-duper important, but we get a fairly good amount of email. And what is our internal expectation for how often we should be checking that? And then the other thing is, since we are having Robert come on as a new superintendent, we should take a little bit of time to think about how we want the superintendent to communicate with us. We've had the gym model for a very long time, and we're very comfortable with it. But there are other models, when we were interviewing candidates, that they'd write a memo to the school board every week with updates for things that have been going on in the district, and shoot that out. Is there something we want to change with that model? Are we happy with the model where we get updates when the superintendent thinks they're needed? Do we want them more regularly? Sort of this how we want to be communicated with from the administration side. And that's, that's it for me. And I made it.
These have all been excellent. I'm gonna be brief, just based on the fact that I don't want to repeat. I do think the team-building that we did this year through building those, like you said, Heather, the times we worked together, I thought it was excellent. I thought it was something that maybe a newer board could benefit from, that sort of team-building environment, getting to know each other, getting to just kind of be a little more relaxed, and not quite as formal. The policy, I'm sorry, the finance slash superintendent search committee, you guys did such a great job this year. I can't, I mean, it was so much work. It was absolutely a mess for us to make, have the same three people do that. We should have moved that around a little bit. And so thank you all, especially Heather, for all the work that you guys put in. I would say just moving forward, the 10th grade electives is such a great point. Paige, I, I think about what Paige said when she left frequently, and how I don't want to get away from that. I agree with you that the electives are an incredibly important part of the high school experience. And just something for future, for thinking, I think that while, you know, every student is important, obviously, we really need to make sure that we're watching that four to five and nine, eight to nine transition, and helping students be ready, because both of those are big leaps. Especially with the two elementary schools coming together, that's a big leap. But as we saw in the survey today, it's a big leap in expectations, it's a big change in the amount of work, it's a big change in the grading system. We just need to make sure that we're getting the students ready to make that jump. And I think that we are doing a good job, but I also believe that there's always room for improvement. So thank you.
And Brian, you're sure you want to go last? All right, then I'll, I guess I'll go. I'll let you do that. I want to thank everybody on the board. You know, you have all made my job as chair really easy. I really appreciate everyone just, yeah, you know, I think we have such a good model, really, for so many other boards, you know, because we do work together, we listen to each other. We may not always agree, but we definitely, you know, listen to each other. Again, to echo, search committee for superintendent, finance committee, excellent work. But I also want to thank Dan, your leadership on policy. I thought you did an excellent job this year. Really appreciate you stepping into that role, and you really did a great job of keeping us on track, and particularly with this policy tonight with the staff conduct, so thank you for that. When I looked at the goals, I'm like, yeah, you know, we, we, it was, it was a lot, especially with the superintendent search. But we definitely addressed all of these. Definitely having Jen on board with the communications. You know, I feel like we're really on a good path, always room for improvement. But I really feel like we're pretty solid there now. Competency-based learning will definitely need to come back. Obviously, there's room, room to work there. One of the things I want to mention is I have particularly enjoyed the last couple of weeks with the student presentations, and my senses, other board members enjoy those as well. And so I really want to make sure that we continue to allow time for those, because I think it's so important to hear the student voice and to hear all the great things that they're doing. And we do have a lot of business before this board, but I think that's a really important piece. So I want to make sure that we continue to do that going forward. And let's see, what else was I going to mention? I've been taking notes from what other people have said, so now my notes kind of got jumbled up. I think, I, I guess I'll, I'll just kind of stop for there for now and turn it over to Brian.
Well, fortunately, you've said all, you've all said all the good stuff, so I don't have to repeat all the good stuff. But any true evaluation, whether it's, you know, it's my staff or any other staff, it can't always be good. You really have to take a hard look on some of the things that went wrong this year, or in the last year, I should say. So this may sound a little bit like Debbie Downer, but there's a, there's a couple of things that I think really need to be looked at as a board, as a whole. Because even though we're seven members of a board, we are one board. And everything we do reflects on each other. So we've had some, kind of some egregious violations this year that kind of really didn't get addressed. And that goes directly towards the integrity of the board. Any one person that does anything reflects on all of us negatively, so it goes directly to our credibility. And if we don't hold ourselves accountable, then where's the integrity? So why we, you know, we need to determine, we need to prove to the taxpayer that if we don't hold ourselves to a high standard, then, you know, we're gonna lose faith. They're gonna lose faith in us. So we need to make sure that we do that. We always hear, or I'm always hearing how we hold our staff and administration to a high standard, but we don't hold ourselves to that same high standard. At least doesn't feel that way to me. It goes both ways, but we are the governing body, and we demand to be held to a higher level. And it starts with us. I mean, and our integrity should be our point of pride every time we, we look at the public. Utilizing positions, our positions here on the board in order to further personal cause or agenda, I saw, I saw that this year. Too many times I've heard of board members utilizing their position for personal gain, either help a friend or family member. We're supposed to be represent the district as a whole, not as an individual. These violations have caused board members to get involved in processes or procedures that they should not have the moral legal authority to, to do. Long-standing policies, longstanding policies and procedures that have served the district well have been hijacked by members of the board for their own personal gain or agenda, and in some cases, has costed the district thousands of dollars. It's a huge violation of trust that the taxpayers of this district have with this board. But just because someone plants the thought in your head does not mean that it is correct path to follow. But yet this board continually will do this. The strongest personality in the room always seems to get the others to follow, rather than letting them think the process through and decide that it's, is this really the direction we want to go in? We need to be more, as a board, be more of an upstander than a bystander. We need to be able to stand up and say, is this the way we want to go? Is this the, the road we want to go down, the path we want to go down? So ultimately, I don't think we as a board really hold ourselves accountable enough. It needs to be, if we really want to do what is best for the district, or else all we're doing is taking up a seat and calling ourselves a board member. We're all charged in making tough decisions, but when they need to be made, people want, people like to wane back and forth until it gets forgotten, and then, but that can't happen anymore. Because the future of the district depends on it. My recommendation for the future is that, and especially if we're gonna have turnover on the board, which we pretty much do every year, at least one person will, will change. But I really want to see, because I, I know we all recommend everyone, we can't require them to take the new board member training with the School Board Association. I don't think that's enough. I think we really need to have legal counsel come in and go over what a school board's authority is. Because I think some people take their authority to be what they feel it should be, not what it legally is. And I think we've strayed from that over the last couple of years, and we need to get back onto that. Because, you know, we're talking about that learning curve with the new member. This will help with that learning curve. And it'll also help with the communication, because communication is starting to be a problem too, where people are not doing it in the way that we've been told to do it from day one, which is everything goes through the superintendent. And some people are going around, I mean, even, even though I know a lot of the administrators here, I will go to Jim before I reach out to them and say, do you mind if I reach out to so-and-so in regards to this? Yes. And I'll CC him on email when I do reach out to them. And I'll CC him on email when I do reach out to them. So, you know, that's the integrity part that really has to be followed. And I'm not seeing that a lot this year. And unfortunately, like I said, this is sounding like Debbie Downer, because all the good stuff was already said, so I couldn't say any good stuff, because I'd just be repeating everybody else's stuff. But I think it's very important that we look at the integrity of the board, dealing with issues head-on and holding each of us accountable, me included. If I violate anything, I should be held accountable. I'm not saying that, that I'm above anything else, because I happen to work in a school district, I just happen to have more, more dealings with it. I deal with my own board and I deal with this board. And I know where that line is and the lines here are starting to get blurred. And that's what's starting to, that's what's kind of bringing me to this. So that's pretty much, I mean, all I have to say. I think everybody on this board has brought something positive to this, to this board overall. Especially this year, we had so much going on and I enjoy working with all of you. It's just, I just don't want to see these get to a point where nobody's being held accountable and we go down a path that is not good, which is where we were, I don't know, 12, 13 years ago, when it was really, really bad on the board, when Tom first came on. So, but Tom, you know, was at least, got to see the bad side and got to get us to the good side and realized that, that didn't work. So let's try a different, different method. So I guess I'll just, I'll just leave it at that.
Other comments? Anybody? Yes, Heather?
So what you're saying, Brian, is if we behave badly enough, Tom will have to run for a seat again and come back?
If it was up to me, yes.
All right. It is, it is a tricky situation, because they're, part of it, I hear what you're saying, Brian, in terms of accountability, but we're elected officials, so there's also kind of limited, sort of, there's sort of limited ways of, you know, if there are issues that ever come up, it's the, ultimately, it's the voters that have the say, you know? So I hear what you're saying, absolutely. And I hear all, everyone's comments. I think everyone had some really important things to say, particularly some of the questions about really shoring up that, you know, line of communication, of the line chain of command. I hear what you're saying about going to the superintendent, absolutely. But also there is, there is, the reality is, is that, you know, it comes down to we're elected and so, you know, I-
Well, you say there's limited means, but even those limited means are not being used. So you've got to keep that in mind.
All right. Well, thank you. All right. Well, thank you, everybody. I think what we'll do right now, and I appreciate Rachel's waiting, I think we'll go ahead and take a five-minute break. And this is, oh, oh, sorry, this is the, I forgot, the, that's a workshop that's separate from the regular meeting, so excuse me. Yeah, I was thinking we're just continuing our meeting, but we're actually going to be moving into a workshop with our DEIJ director, who is going to do a, I know the topic you gave us, but it's basically, she's going to be doing a board presentation for us shortly. But before we get to that, let's see, where are we? We don't have committee updates tonight. Are there any public comments? Any members of the public who would like to address the board?
My name is Stephanie Johnson. I'm from Lee, New Hampshire, and I have two kids in the district. Try not to break the microphone. Okay. I just wanted to speak briefly on the survey findings. I just want to encourage the board to not ignore the fact that a third of parents surveyed said that the middle school does not adequately prepare their children for high school. I think that's not a statistically insignificant number. I also think it's rather telling if the students themselves are reporting that they don't know how to go from, you know, a P or a B to an M or an E, or go from an M to an E. I did send the board an email earlier today. I would just, you know, I'm not going to read that now. I just want to also echo Mr. Newkirk's comments about, if we talk to our kids about excellence and giving their best effort and doing their best, I think that we need to ensure that message is getting through to our middle school students. And as a parent of a sixth grader, I can tell you that message has not gotten through to him. I can also admit that as a 12-year-old, he's going to hear what he wants to hear and at times stop listening. But the takeaway that he has received is that good enough is good enough, just okay is just fine. And my concern is that is going to be a problem when he moves into high school and that's also going to be a problem for any students who are moving into college. So I think we need to consider the fact that we need to prepare our students to be successful. We should be encouraging them to do their best. And obviously, the best is not going to look the same for all students. It may look different from day to day, but I think we can always encourage our kids to have, give their best effort, give their best attitude. And I have concerns that that is not happening. The only other point I want to make is I think if the findings are that students and parents don't understand the system, there is a problem. And as a parent myself, I can tell you, sort of going from four to five, that whenever I raised concerns about the system, I was often met with sort of a condescending brush-off of, parents just don't understand. And while it's true, I didn't grow up with competency-based grading, that doesn't mean that I can't read and that I don't understand the comments that are being said. However, I don't think the feedback that is given to students is meaningful. I don't think it's achieving the goal of telling kids what they need to do to get to that next level or how they need to improve their work. And if the comments don't tell my student that and if I can't read the comments and understand what needs to happen, then we have a problem. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. So closing actions, we have our last meeting with this board at our March 6 meeting and then we'll have elections after that and our meeting, and then we start basically a new board year on March 20. And so with that, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn. Heather? And a second. Yes, Gianna, all in favor? And we have seven in favor. We adjourn. We'll take a five-minute break and then Rachel will come and do her presentation. Thank you.